Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights Candidate Forum for the November 2nd general election. This is the forum for candidates running for Dearborn City Council. My name is Jennifer Oliver and I am the president of the local league. This program is presented and produced as a public service by the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan national organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The league never supports or opposes candidates or political parties. Membership is open to everyone aged 16 years or older. For additional information on today's candidates, please visit the league's online voter guide at vote411.org or download a printable copy of the league's voter guide from our website, Limited numbers of print copies of the voter guide will be available at clerks offices and libraries in Dearborn. Normally, we would hold a live in-person public forum. However, due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, tonight's forum is being held virtually. We and the candidates are interacting tonight through the Zoom platform, and the recording that you are watching will be released in its entirety. The League of Women Voters wants every eligible voter to inform themselves and vote in the November 2nd election. Although all local precincts will be open on election day, please contact your city clerk's office for an absentee ballot if you prefer that option. There are several ways to apply for an absentee ballot, and all voters are eligible to vote absentee. You can even apply for, receive, and complete an absentee ballot at the clerk's office right up until the day before the election. For more information, go to vote411.org or contact the city clerk. If you aren't sure whether or not you're registered to vote, or whether your absentee ballot has been issued or recorded, please visit the Michigan Voter Information Center at mi.gov/vote. Now, I am delighted to introduce the moderator of tonight's forum, Paula Bowman, co-president of the League of Women Voters of Michigan. Paula?
Thanks, Jen. Hello, everyone. Today is Wednesday, September 29th, 2021, and we're recording this program in its entirety via the Zoom platform. As always, the League of Women Voters is not responsible for the views expressed by the candidates. The candidates have agreed to the following plans. The candidates will speak in alphabetical order and will rotate after the first question. Each candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement and one minute to answer each question. We will end with each candidate having two minutes to make a final statement. Today's timekeeper, Leslie Windlass, will raise a card and say stop. I'm not sure if it's going to be a card or her timepiece, and say stop to notify the candidate when their time expires. She will also be giving a 10-second verbal warning before the end of their allowed allotted time. The questions include both those developed by the league and those solicited from the community prior to the forum. All questions have been screened to prevent duplication and personal attacks and to ensure that all questions address all of the candidates. Unfortunately, time will not allow for all candidates to be asked every single question, and we encourage you to contact the candidates directly if your question is not answered. Contact information for all of the candidates is available online at vote411.org. So now it's time to get started with our candidate forum for the city council, city of Dearborn. 14 candidates will be on the November 2nd general election ballot for the Dearborn City Council race. You may vote for seven candidates in this race. Each of them will win a four-year term. Their names in alphabetical order are Robert A. Abraham, Said Mashgari Alawati, Kamal Al-Sawafi, Erin Burns, Silvio Davis, Lola Elzine, Gary Enos, Koder Farhat, Mustafa Hamood, Leslie Herrick, Sam Luckman, Khalil Othman, Ken Paris, and Michael Serini. Let's start with the opening statements. Mr. Abraham, if we could hear from you first, go ahead. Are we having some audio trouble because I do not hear Mr. Seri- Mr. Abraham?
It does not appear that his audio is connected. It's not turning colors, so.
Mr. Abraham, can you check to make sure you're not muted?
I think we just lost him.
Yeah. Okay. You know what? We'll go ahead and start with Mr. Alawati, and we'll come back to Mr. Abraham. Mr. Alawati, if you could give your one-minute opening statement?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, thank you so much, and how nice and an honor to be the first person to speak at this event. I want to thank the League of Women's Voters. My name is Said Alawati. I'm a husband, a father of five daughters, and a grandfather of five children. I've been living in the city of Dearborn for over 40 years. I completed my college education in accounting and business administration. I currently work at Access in the Community Mental Health, providing supportive employment service to the abled for the last four years. Prior to that, I provided training and employment services with Michigan Works. I have a background of an accounting and tax preparation for over 22 years. I'm a long-life servant of the city of Dearborn. I've been a traffic commission for over eight years. Prior to that, I was a precinct delegate. I sit on many or several nonprofit organizations as board of directors.
Thank you, Mr. Alawati. Mr. Abraham, are you back on? Can you give us your one-minute opening statement?
Yes. Thank you. I'm honored to be here tonight. I apologize for the technical difficulty there. I wanted to just let the public know that I am committed to Dearborn. I have been serving the Dearborn community for five terms on the city council, and I'm asking the voters again to reelect me, to reaffirm that commitment to all the residents in all areas of Dearborn, to fully support the traditional excellent city services that each of us have grown accustomed to. And I think it's very important that an experienced elected official remains on the council during what will be a very transitional period in Dearborn. So the first time, we have no incumbent mayor running. So again, as the experienced member on the council, I'm asking everyone for their vote come November. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Al-Sawafi, your opening statement?
Ma'am, first off, I'd like to thank the organizers who dedicated their personal time to organizing this forum. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kamal Sawafi, and I'm running for Dearborn City Council because I love our city and I have the passion and desire to serve. But most importantly, I decided to run because I'm qualified, experienced, and prepared to leverage that experience to tackle the residents' concerns on day one. I grew up in Dearborn, starting at Oakman Elementary School, all the way where I earned my bachelor's degree from the University of Michigan, Dearborn. I was also elected the president of the Supply Chain Association. Later, I earned my master's degree from Wayne State University. Most importantly, currently, I work for the county as the business development manager. I help attract new investments and development projects to the county. My favorite part of the job is the help I provide to local business owners. The most important experience that I have-
10 seconds.
-is the help of attraction of grant money, which is free money from the state, federal level, and I want to help bring that experience to our city council and our city.
Time.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Al-Sawafi. Ms. Burns, your opening statement, please?
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. My name is Erin Burns, and I'm a candidate for reelection to Dearborn City Council. I'm an educator by trade and currently work at the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor. And I was first really inspired to run for city council four years ago based on my commitment to strengthening our community and my work as chair of the City Beautiful Commission at the time. And during my first term, I've worked Dearborn forward by promoting equity, inclusion, and environmental justice while investing in what has always made Dearborn a great place to live. Quality city services, including recreation and our libraries, and of course, our highly skilled first responders. I'm committed to investing in our aging infrastructure to keep our residents and their homes safe, and you can count on me to advocate for every person across our city. I will always have your best interests at heart, and I'm prepared to make tough decisions when necessary. I'm committed to building a Dearborn that works for everyone, and I ask for your vote on November 2nd.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Silvio Davis. I just wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for your time and efforts in organizing this forum, to educate our residents. It's very important and appreciated. I'm a lifelong resident, and my parents have been here over 50 years. I'm a product of Dearborn Public Schools. I'm currently a supervisor at a local insurance agency in Dearborn. I work, sleep, and play in Dearborn. I'm proud of the volunteer work I have done with the Dearborn Goodfellows, currently the president, the Heinz Park PM Rotary Club, the past president, Winter Special Olympics, All-Star Day at Homecoming, and I'm a proud member of Save Our Pools while still operating floating nights at Ten Night. I am proud to announce I have been endorsed by Councilman David Bazey, former Councilman Mark Shushanian, along with the Dearborn Police Officers Union, the Dearborn Firefore Union, and the Michigan Regional Council of carpenters and mill rights. I'm doing this for one reason, to ensure each resident has a voice. I will be your voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elzine, your opening remarks?
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this important forum tonight. My name is Lola Elzine, and I am hoping to earn your support in my bid for Dearborn City Council. I established my very own small business venture title agency in 2014 here in the heart of Dearborn. I'm an active volunteer for several community organizations, including currently serving as the secretary for the Dearborn Education Foundation for the last three years. I'm a graduate of the University of Michigan, Dearborn, Thomas M. Cooley Law School, and I recently earned an MBA from the Ross School of Business at the University of Michigan, Ann Arbor. Between my professional and personal experience, I'm uniquely qualified to represent you on city council. I'm running for city council because I care about the future of our city. I care about the future of our children, and I want to serve the city that raised me by ensuring that government is working for its residents. I want to be your voice. I'm running because Dearborn residents deserve council members who will work for the people, who will serve all residents, and importantly, council members who will lead with transparency and accountability. Please vote Lola Elzine for Dearborn City Council so that we can get things done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Enos, your opening remarks?
Hello, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for doing this. My name is Gary Enos, like you said. I'm running for Dearborn on city council. My commitment to you is to listen, respond, and address your concerns. I will work to preserve the city services that make Dearborn great and prioritize the safety of all our residents and communities. I'm a business owner for 26 years and a product of Dearborn Public Schools. I graduated from Atso Ford in 1984, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Farhat, your opening remarks?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Everybody, I'd like to thank Jennifer, I'd like to thank you, Paula, and all the League of Women Voters for putting together such a great forum as always. So thank you so much for the guys' roles on the other bases. My name is Kader Farhat, and I'm honored to run for Dearborn City Council to represent each and every single resident in the city. I'm also honored that I have earned, that I have had earned the trust and votes and support of residents back when I got there. I'm running because I'm a strong believer in equity, accessibility, and inclusion and diversity. I'm running to make sure that our residents are receiving and will continue to receive quality services. And then I would like to make sure that our residents' voice being heard at the table. It's no longer acceptable to, for any of our residents from any part of our city to feel that they are left out or that they are not considered. I'm a public speaker, advocate, and public policy maker for the past eight years.
10 seconds.
Also heavily involved in so many organizations like the Goodfellows, LAHC, Rotary Club, Chang Club. I hope to earn one of your seven votes on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farhat. Mr. Hamood, your opening remarks?
I want to take a moment to thank the league for hosting this forum. An informed electorate is critical to our democracy. My name is Mustafa Hamood, and I'm asking for one of your votes for city council. I was born and raised in Dearborn, attended our public schools, and graduated from U of M, Dearborn. I'm thankful for the opportunities our city has given generations of our residents, including my immigrant parents and grandparents. I'm proud of the innovation that starts here and sweeps America. As an engineer at Ford, I use an innovation mindset every day to implement solutions and deliver the best products for our customers. If I elected to the council, I'll do the same for our city. I'm running for city council because as a taxpayer, I want every dollar to count because I think it's past time to fix our broken infrastructure, secure our neighborhoods, and implement common sense solutions in our city. I want to hear what issues matter to you because only by working together can we make Dearborn better. Vote for me, Mustafa Hamood, as one of your seven city council members. Let's build a better Dearborn.
Thank you. Ms. Herrick?
Good evening. My name is Leslie Herrick, and I've been proud to serve as one of your Dearborn City Council members for the past four years. Thank you to League of Women Voters for hosting this important forum. I'm asking Dearborn residents for your vote so I can continue to serve you on city council. Building on four years of visible leadership and successful advocacy for Dearborn residents, I'm eager to continue listening, improving transparency, delivering first-class services that our residents deserve equitably across the city. I have a legacy of making fact-based decisions and finding solutions that work for long-term economic growth and enhanced quality of life for everyone in Dearborn. I'm uniquely qualified to continue to serve with having had four years of experience serving on Dearborn City Council. And prior to that, folks asked me to run because of the other experience that I've had here, raising my son here, working for the Dearborn Public Schools, the city of Dearborn, DFCU Financial and other organizations, and lots of community service for which I've been recognized as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Luckman?
Thank you to the league for the opportunity. My name is Sam Luckman. I have a bachelor's in psychology. I'm a single mom of two, live with my elderly mother in the South End of Dearborn. I'm a Realtor and a legal administrative specialist. As a community activist who's been representing the little guy up to the state and federal level, I've been a fighter for residents. I've had the tenacity, strength, and moral compass to call out wrong when I see it. I'm someone who knows the ins and outs of the city, the laws and contracts, from all the research time and work that I've put in. I'm someone who's been involved for decades in recreation, from saving the pools, demanding more investment in our parks and recreation, demanding more from police and traffic safety and better air quality. I have a proven track record of having a backbone to stand up for what's right. My experience is one who's not going to be learning the job from scratch. And whatever have I achieved? I've brought green infrastructure, held big corporations accountable, and I'm asking for your vote this November. Vote for Sam.
Time.
Thank you. Mr. Osman, your opening statement?
Good evening. Thank you very much, League of Women Voters. I really appreciate the opportunity. It's an honor. My name is Khalil Othman. Like the millions of immigrants who came before me, my dream of a better life led me to America. When I settled in Dearborn almost 20 years ago, I had just gotten married. I had no job, no money, and I did not speak or do English. By the grace of God, I'm a college graduate with a master's degree, a technology leader, entrepreneur, community servant, homeowner, and proud husband and father. I'm able to do all these things because, not because I'm great, but because God is great, and He blessed me by bringing me to America, a land of greatness, a land with equal justice under the law, freedom of religion, and above all, a land where if you work hard and play by the rules, the sky is the limit for your dreams and aspirations.
10 seconds.
I'm running this grassroots campaign to serve you, the Dearborn residents, and not any special interest or political establishment. I'm asking for one of your votes on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paris?
Hi, good evening, folks. I want to thank the league and all the candidates too, and wish all the candidates good luck coming up in November and tonight. You know, I've been a resident of the city of Dearborn for 55 years, and I served 39 years in uniform as law enforcement in the city for Dearborn Police and U of M, Dearborn. I've attended literally hundreds of city council and city-related meetings, committee of the whole mayor's briefings, boards and commissions, budget meetings, et cetera. Some of my issues that I'd like to address are public safety-related, the traffic and crime, priority-based fiscal responsibility, investing in development, technology and infrastructure, and promoting better customer service and efficiency. I got to ask you, though, when's the last time you saw police in your neighborhood? We shouldn't be happy with increased shootings, robberies, break-ins, and thefts. We're tired and frightened of reckless driving and accidents. If you're not happy with the direction of our city, let's do something about it. Isn't it time to elect somebody with police experience on our Dearborn City Council? Well, for Paris, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serini, your opening statement?
Hi, thank you. My name is Mike Serini, and I want to thank the league for this opportunity. I have been, had the pleasure of serving on the council for the last two terms. It's my eighth year there. I'm a lifelong resident and father in Dearborn Public Schools. I've been in sales for 27 years. I went back to school and received my law degree and passed the bar in our licensed attorney as well. I believe that my record is very clear. I have always stood up for issues that I believe were very pertinent, whether it was infrastructure or the recent flooding, where three years ago I had requested an independent study on what's going on. I'm not shy to tackle the tough issues because I do believe Dearborn is a great place to live, raise a family, and I do think that we are heading in the right direction. And I would be honored to earn your vote and serve on the city council again. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all of you for your opening statements. Now it's time to begin the questions. We'll start this first question with Mr. Abraham. What are your plans to incorporate green infrastructure into our city?
Thank you. Again, this is Councilman Robert Abraham. Sustainability and green infrastructure is a very important topic, and together with the rest of the council that is together, we have been discussing all aspects of sustainability from trash recycling at the lowest level to solar energy, electric vehicles, recycling of water. Every aspect has to be explored and taken into consideration to find the right opportunities for our residents and for the economic payback for the city taxpayers. We can't lose sight of that. I am personally invested in green initiatives and sustainability for our planet and take our environmental concerns at every level very seriously. Thank you.
Time.
Thank you. Mr. Alawati, your response, please? Mr. Alawati?
I'm here.
Okay.
Can I get you to repeat the question, please?
Sure. What are your plans to incorporate green infrastructure into our city?
Yes, please. We will definitely have to make sure that our economy is up to gear because I think there is a, there are many businesses moving outside of Dearborn, and we have to figure out somehow maybe creating some sort of incentives to make sure that we keep our businesses in Dearborn because that's the bread and butter of, you know, keeping our city alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Al-Sawafi?
Green infrastructure is actually something I'm very passionate about, and it's something that we can integrate into our current systems, develop our current systems. And one example is maybe providing some green space that can be used for the flooding. I know we don't have enough of that, and this is stuff that we can benchmark at the county level, like Heinz Park. We have brownfield lots and spaces in Dearborn that we can use as green space. So it could be a park, and then when we do have flooding, it could be somewhere where a water can be deposited. So I think it's a multi-pronged approach that we can use. It can be used to beautify our parks while at the same, at the same time, reducing the amount of stormwater entering our basements. I know that's something that I lived through this summer. My basement flooded twice, and I think if you-
10 seconds.
If you live the problem, you're more motivated to fix the problem. I definitely lived the floods all this summer, and I want to get on that and fix it right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burns?
Thank you. So investing in green infrastructure is critical. We know that climate change is real, and we must do everything that we can at all levels of government to address climate change and to mitigate its impacts. I think infrastructure to deal with rainwater, you know, we experienced regarding flooding over the summer. Our infrastructure is aging, particularly on the East and South End. It's 100 years old. We know that we need to work with our partners at the state and federal level to obtain funding to enhance our infrastructure. I think green space, rain gardens, permeable parking lot surfaces, all of these spaces that we can better utilize to absorb rainwater will be really critical moving forward. I think investments in, you know, solar power, solar panels, harnessing wind power will be key, and of course, you know, electric vehicles. Ford Motor Company just announced an $11 billion investment in electric vehicles, and so I think getting on board with that and having charging stations across the city will be helpful as well in terms of green infrastructure.
Time.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Everybody has great ideas. I mean, this is part of why I want to do this. I want to work together with everybody that comes up with these ideas. I'm never going to say that I have the best idea, but I may motivate somebody to come up with a great idea. So definitely, we have to move forward. Our city has to move forward in the green infrastructure, not only to save money but to save energy and just be, you know, a good city that's saving where they can. This is a blank. But again, working together with everybody with all these ideas, we have to move forward, piggyback up on other cities, use their ideas. We have to have a main person within our city that that's their focus because that's where the, where we're going. That's where the future is. So something we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elzine?
Regarding green infrastructure, especially after the flooding that the city has gone through, I believe that it's important that we replace our gray infrastructure with green infrastructure as soon as possible because the water pollution that occurs after the flooding was just horrendous, and I think it's something that we need to do collectively as a city, and that's why it's important for us to connect with the state and federal level regarding those funding issues because I know that the number one reason why we haven't transitioned to that is due to funding. And I feel like once we have a new administration, we'll be able to work on that, and I think time is of the essence. There's a sense of urgency here, and it's important that we address green infrastructure as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Enos?
Yeah, this is a very important topic. I've got to educate myself more on it, but there's a lot of good ideas. I'm going to, I would educate myself, work with the council, work with the mayor, but we definitely have to get the state and federal in on this. And we should have a department just dedicated strictly to working on our infrastructure for the city, and I would do whatever I could to support, support that. So that, so thank you.
Thank you. We have a new question. We'll start this next round with Mr. Farhat. What will you do to move Dearborn toward the use of more sustainable energy?
Awesome. Thank you so much. This is a very important question, and this is how the world and the new era is. We live in Dearborn, and Dearborn is the home of one of the largest gigantic corporate in the world that is a sports motor company, and their announcement of even new investment with billions and billions of dollars, even in vehicles, but that- even in vehicles, but that should be reflected also, uh, to our city. What were would be a great starting point? We have to take advantage of the fact that Ford Motor Company is here, and they are willing to, uh, put in a lot of money uh, and then take that, uh, to different, uh, level. Also, we can use, uh, more of a solar system. We can even attract more factories and even more manufactured, uh, manufacturing companies, uh, to our city. Uh, it's a time to protect, um, our environment.
And seconds?
Our energy, because that is also going to save our residents, um, you know, uh, very devastating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farhat. Mr. Hamud, your response?
So I really appreciate this question because I like to talk about it when I talk to residents and, um, you know, I think it's something that we haven't really talked about enough in this campaign. So I actually work on electrification at Ford Motor Company, and it's already announced, we all know, the new electric F-150 is going to be built here in Dearborn. But really, what we need to address is our energy infrastructure as well. So clean energy is one step, and what we can do as a city is one, simplify our permitting process to help residents get things like solar panels and level-two chargers into their homes. That's going to be very critical. And, uh, two, even as a city, there are already government grants that allow us to do things like add solar panels to buildings, and the government will actually pay the cost. It's just a matter of us executing and building them ourselves. So there's a lot of steps we can take as a municipality if we actually decide to put our mind to it and actually go and roll it out along our city and help our residents be ready for the clean energy transformation that's going to take place.
Thank you. Ms. Herrick?
Thank you for, uh, this important question. This is actually something that I've been talking with, um, with a group of residents. We've already had meetings on this and, um, sustainability and moving the city towards, um, more, using more, uh, sustainable energy is, is critical for us going forward. I think we've been a little bit behind the curve in that Ford Motor Company has been a leader in that field, and the city itself has not followed suit. Um, we've talked about things like, uh, solar panels on city buildings as well as, um, in, encouraging residents to look for solar. Um, switching over to, uh, DTE is offering, um, electric that is, uh, provided through solar energy and wind instead of traditional, um, means. Partnering with them to be able to make that more affordable, because right now it costs a little bit more if you choose that plan. Um, I was pleased that we voted on a multimodal transportation plan last fall that the city approved, and we need to continue on that route. Um, and it's, uh, attracting other sustainable businesses to Dearborn. It can be a source of revenue for the system, for the city to bring those businesses in, and residents who are interested in that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Herrick. Ms. Luckman?
Hi. So one of the things that I actually, um, proposed to, to a state rep was, um, that Dearborn actually builds a solar field on a Brownsville property that is in our, uh, um, that is in our possession as we speak. And Brownsville property actually give us a million-dollar, uh, grant for, um, for development, and then it also would allow us to have infrastructure, it would, um, allow us to apply for infrastructure funding as well. Um, this plan that I proposed would allow us to have that kind of, um, what exactly what you're talking about, clean energy. So my plan to obtain that energy would allow the city to obtain, generate its own solar energy as well as sell the extra energy back to DTE to generate revenue as well. So I think we've been ahead of the curve when it comes to generating energy as well as, um,
Ten seconds?
environmental, um, issues, um, as well as green infrastructure. There's a plan I have for that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Osman?
Very good question. Sorry, I'm, I'm on my son's soccer game right now. I'm talking in the car. Uh, but I, I second everything that everybody said in terms of we need to start thinking outside the box and start leveraging the federal and state funding, because there is a lot of the whole country is moving toward, uh, 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 energy, uh, and, and, uh, green infrastructure. And this is something we need to start thinking outside the box and benchmark our city to other cities across, across the board. Because I know the, for a fact, there are many cities that are using this kind of, uh, uh, infrastructure space and green infrastructure and sustainability and everything. All, the whole industry across the board is used, start moving toward that space. So for our best benefit to sta- establish a benchmarking and start seeing where we are and where we need to be in the future, that will give us an idea. Uh, how can we move forward and set a plan to, uh, to, to, to move to the future? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perez?
Yes, thanks for the question. You know, I'm thinking about this a little bit differently, that maybe we should look inward right now to what we're already doing. Uh, you know, Consumers Energy, DTE, how many power failures have we had over this, just this last summer in particular? It's part of a development plan that we should have in Dearborn. Look at all the green spaces that are being occupied. I know Ford Motor Company has had thirty-eight properties that have been for sale for this last year. Uh, some of them have been sold. You've got, uh, twenty acres at Mercury and Ford Road that have been sold for development. You've got Greenfield and Paul that's been sold for development. You've got, uh, uh, on Kingsley, uh, sixty-nine oh-six Kingsley is ready for demolition. What's going to go on these properties, this other development? What's going to happen with the Village Plaza? It's in the demolition phase right now. It could be developed, but, uh, let's take care of our infrastructure right now. Let's hold DTE accountable. And let's not develop. We can go up.
Time.
Vacant properties. Let's take care of those first.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Mr. Serini?
Yes, thank you. Same question?
Same question.
Okay. Yeah, I think everybody has touched on it, and I, uh, do agree with, uh, the federal and state dollars. And I agree with, uh, Mr. Perez regarding the issues that we have, uh, regarding buildings now because the council voted not to let the people reinvest into the buildings. So for me, I think it's crucial, uh, that we have the proper data to make these decisions. Um, we had a solar, uh, panel project that was brought forward, and then later found out that where the installation of it was not, uh, feasible, uh, because it could not hold, the panels cannot be held on the roof. So for me, I believe that this is a, a very pertinent issue, and it is the future. And right now, as many of my, uh, colleagues have indicated, is the time where the funding is ripe for it.
Ten seconds.
We have to have the proper data, and we have to have experts give us their opinion and have multiple, all the stakeholders at the table so we can make proper decisions and move our city forward.
Thank you. We have a new question, and we'll start this one with Mr. Alawati. Speeding and other traffic violations are an ongoing problem. What actions would you take to make our neighborhood streets safer?
Thank you for that question. Um, I know many people have been speaking in regards to speed humps and speed bumps. And I, I, I think we all need to acknowledge the fact that there is an issue with uh, reckless driving that we really need to step up our game. Obviously, uh, we have one of the best police departments in our nation. Uh, but I think there's some work that needs to bu- to be done in that regard. Uh, I hate to say that I would probably not be in favor of the speed bumps or speed humps unless we can consider maybe putting them in, uh, children's traffic areas such as in front of schools or maybe, uh, our city parks. Um, that's what I got.
Thank you. Mr. Al-Sawafi?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's a very important question. Actually, I've knocked a lot of doors, uh, over the past few months in Dearborn, and the number one concern that I heard from all over, uh, residents from all over the city is reckless and speeding and loud drivers. And as a man in uniform, I definitely appreciate public safety. Uh, as far as the speed bumps, speed humps, I think that's something we can try as a pilot program around our parks, our schools. But this is, this is a, there's a root cause to this problem, and I believe it stands with education. We got, you know, when, when somebody's speeding, that's, that's, uh, that's disrespectful. You're violating the, uh, the trust that we have between each other as residents. Um, so there's different things that we could do. We can work with our police department. I believe we have good manpower, but they're maybe not managed correctly, maybe taking inspiration administrative.
Ten seconds?
duties, actually being on the road and enforcing those traffic laws.
Thank you. Ms. Burns?
Thank you. So traffic safety is, of course, a critical issue across the city and our neighborhoods and on our major roads. On almost every door I knock in any neighborhood in the city, this is one of the top issues that comes up. Um, I think for me, you know, I will certainly look to invest in our Dearborn Police Department's, um, Traffic Enforcement Unit. I think that's critically important, and we'll also need to examine data from neighboring cities, um, on success with speed humps. Um, we know that Detroit is working on that right now. Dearborn Heights is looking at a pilot program. Other cities have utilized speed humps for many years. Um, so I think we need to look at that data, look at, uh, rates of success. Um, certainly, if we are to invest in speed humps, I wouldn't want to see those, um, necessarily on like major fire routes. Uh, we need our first responders to still be able to get through quickly. Uh, we'd want to talk with our public safety officials, police and fire, DPW in terms of snowplows, and make sure that they're situated appropriately. Um, and lastly, I think we also need to convene and work with driving schools in the city to make sure that they're emphasizing safe driving and noting how important that is.
Time.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
If I had a short answer, I'd say sit in the room with Ken Perez and, uh, you'll come up with a good solution. Um, it's definitely, uh, a, a, a huge issue in any neighborhood. Um, any resident that I've spoken with, they, that's the first thing they bring up is the speeding. Oh, it needs to be addressed. I mean, people are dying. Uh, we're reading about accidents every day, flip over, you know, turnovers, flipovers. It's, uh, something we definitely need to work with the community on educating and letting them know and getting them involved and how we can connect them with the police department to make sure that everybody's educated on what's going on. It's not a joke, you know, the people that are speeding. I spoke with some of them that say there's nothing you're ever going to do that's going to stop this, but there is. I mean, we're a community and we're standing together on something that's, uh, very important to educate, uh,
Ten seconds?
and, and get involved. So definitely involving the police department. I believe that the police department just received some federal money or some state money to, uh, enforce a little bit more, but we definitely have to focus on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elzane?
So, um, speed bumps are very important. Um, but we need to be mindful of ambulances and firefighter trucks in the event that we have speed bumps. We have to make sure that this won't impact them during emergencies. So in light of an emergency situation, we have to make sure that firefighter trucks and ambulances are able to get through appropriately. And also, um, snowplow trucks, uh, in the winter time when the streets are being cleaned. We have to make sure that if we install any type of speed bumps, it won't affect that as well. And I think that's very important. Traffic safety is a huge issue, and I feel like we need more police on the streets. We need more, um, police officers, especially uh, during school times when kids are going to school and leaving. I think the more police officers that people see on the streets, um, patrolling, patrolling the neighborhoods, I feel like that would help tremendously. It'll be a type of deterrence, and that's also important. And I know the city in the past has
Time.
damage to vehicles.
Thank you. Mr. Enos?
Um, yes, this, this is a huge topic. The number one thing that I get asked about is the speeding. I'm not for the speed bumps, you know, you got to deal with the snow, and then what if someone's going fifty miles an hour down the street and hits a speed bump? If that happens, they're going to go up in the air and they might up on a sidewalk or in someone's house. So that's something we got to look at. The number one thing we should do for this is to enforce the, enforce the laws on the books, and the judges need to not be leaning on the people that are brought in front of them. That's my, my opinion. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farhat?
Absolutely. This is a very important topic, and unfortunately, it is supporting a lot of our younger youth, uh, you know, and putting them at very high risk of, uh, getting permanently injured and even lose their life, and that's really something that is not acceptable. It's heartbreaking. Um, so I think that this is a collective effort that, uh, you know, throughout our society.
Ten seconds?
Our families, uh, our, our schools, uh, our parents and our police departments. So we have to enforce the, the rules and, uh, make sure that we are spreading the light and, uh, educating our youth on the importance of safety.
Time.
Why is?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farhat. We'll start a new question with Mr. Hamud. Do you see a need to refine ordinances intended to eliminate blight? Why or why not?
So, um, I'm not aware of any specific ordinances that are targeted toward blight because, uh, I think it's a, i- it's, it's kind of arbitrary, right? You, you have to define what, what the ordinances are, but, you know, I think, um, we should as a city always choose our, to, uh, encourage better, um, development and ensure that we don't end up with situations where we end up with blight. I mean, right now, we've actually seen our property values go up. And for the most part, actually, um, you know, our, our city building, uh, administration is actually very restrictive as it is. So one of the, so, so we do find a lot of, uh, open buildings in our, um, in our city, but part of that has to do with the complexity of our building code. So actually, ironically, the, um, reducing the amount of regulation and being more intelligent about regulation will actually reduce the amount of vacancies that we have because it'll allow people to come and invest in our city.
Thank you. Ms. Herrick?
I'm sorry, was that for me?
Yes, Ms. Herrick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Um, Dearborn's long had a program that purchases, uh, blighted homes that are in, in great just repair, especially those on smaller properties. It's been a really effective program that I think we need to continue, especially in the thirty-foot lots that we have, um, in some of the older neighborhoods. Um, what the city does is buys them and tears them down and, and subdivides the property to make the properties next door, offers that up for sale so they have larger properties, um, uh, in, in those neighborhoods. And I think we need to continue that program. One thing we need to do is invest more in the technology to make it easier to report blighted, blight or, um, issues in the neighborhoods where it's decreasing property values or, or possibly causing dangerous situations, because right now it's just, uh, you have to navigate through either our website or figure out who to call. There have been improvements made in, into the call-in system to report some of these things. But we need to invest in more technology to make it easier for residents and businesses to report and track if things are being, um, improved or, or penalized.
Time.
Thank you. Ms. Luckman?
Hi, yes. I do, there is a need for, um, ordinances from time to time to be amended. All ordinances to be reviewed and amended as necessary, um, whether it's a blight ordinance or any other. Um, blight ordinances, yes, they do, um, tend to help the city, um, with removal of, of them. But sometimes we do need to be conscientious of whether they are too, too restrictive, whether they're, um, impacting the, the residents. Um, or they need to be amended so as to allow more reporting or more, um, enforcement. All ordinances need to be reviewed at some point in time where they need to be changed or amended, uh, in order to be, be better enforced or, um, more helpful to the community in general.
Ten seconds?
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Osman?
Hello, thank you. Uh, uh, honestly, as a technology leader, they've been, uh, in the technology for the last sixteen years. This is where technology comes handy. Uh, this is one of the situation where we can build, uh, a mobile app that will give each resident and elected official the transparency to understand what kind of ordinances do we have today, instead of searching and, and, and trying to figure out what kind of ordinances we have to follow or we have to apply. So transparency in, in terms of, uh, technology, we will be able to create something and leverage that as a tool that will help our residents as well as provide more information to, to our, uh, uh, community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perez?
Yes, uh, I'm looking at this too, that, that there's a couple of different things to look at. Uh, it's already been touched on. We do have a number of blighted properties, uh, within the city of Dearborn. Again, or, uh, businesses that are not being renovated or developed on our timetable. You know, but there's economics, there's other unforeseeable things like this thing called a pandemic the last year. People don't have a chance to go ahead and do some things that maybe they might ordinarily do. Uh, we do have city programs and county and state programs that will also assist people in getting their homes in order and making some, uh, repairs. I know Leslie Herrick touched on a little bit of that earlier, but, uh, you know, look at sixty-nine oh-six Kingsley. That's due for demolition. That's been for years. You know, I went delivering signs in that area, and I saw kids that were coming out of that building and actually reported it. But there are so many blighted properties in the city that we need to attend to, need to hold the owners. need to hold the owners accountable, let alone our city administrators accountable to get the job done.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Serini?
Yes, thank you for that question. Uh, yes, that, the ordinances definitely have to be refined. A lot of the ordinances are written to lose for interpretation. The technology is a big concern. There's tickets written uh, for uh, issues that are um, uh, that require permits, which are already permitted and they don't have uh, the ability to check. So there's a lot of concerns there. Is regarding to blight, absolutely, uh, there has been a, a big concern since I've been on the council of consistency, consistent enforcement. It, for me, i- it all has to do with uh, deployment of your uh, resources. For example, during one of the budget study sessions, I asked uh, what do we do with the eighteen people that are measuring the grass during the winter time? And the director indicated that they work together. Uh, we cannot be reactive. We have to have a real plan.
Ten seconds.
And blight, including our own responsibility, we can't have Christmas decorations up in the middle of April on Warren Avenue. So it has to do with processes and a plan. When you don't have a plan, we end up with what we did now.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham?
Thank you. Blight is an important issue in our city and it has been for a long time. Specifically to address your question, uh, the council as a body has to be progressive and proactive to meet the needs of the community. You have to listen to your constituents and your colleagues and work collectively to develop reasonable solutions that work with all of our residents. And that is at times a huge challenge to get consensus amongst the body and bring forward reasonable ordinances that can be enforced by the mayor and his administration. I think I've demonstrated that over the last twenty years that I have the capability to bring people together, develop solutions that are reasonable and that will allow the mayor and his administration to operate within the confines
Time.
of requirements as well.
Thank you. I'm so sorry that we are already at the end of our question asking time and it's now time for our two-minute closing statements. We will begin with Mr. Al Sawafi, your two-minute closing statement, please.
Yes, ma'am. Again, my name is Kamal Sawafi.
Can you hear me?
No, no, hold on. It's Mr. Al Sawafi that we're hearing.
Sorry.
Uh, I just want to say Dearborn is not about a structure or an organization. Dearborn is about its people and its neighborhoods. And this is why I want to further invest in our streets, our parks and pools, our businesses, but most importantly, our public safety. We see that the number one concern is reckless speeding drivers in our neighborhoods. My number one concern. What makes me a qualified and unique candidate for Dearborn City Council is my diversified and relevant experiences. Dearborn is a great place to call home. I love it. I've been here my whole life. But we're facing so many challenges. And it's my experiences as the ma- business development manager for Wayne County. It's my experiences as a business owner and it's my experiences as a military officer that provide me with the necessary skill sets to become an effective city council member. I've served our country. I've served our county and now I'm asking you to help me in serving our city. At the end of the day, I'm your neighbor and I want to do good for our neighborhood. My name is Kamal Sawafi. I'm running for Dearborn City Council and I hope that I can count on your support on November second. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burns, your two-minute final statement?
Thank you. Um, thank you again to the legal women voters for hosting us tonight and thank you um, to those who will be watching via Zoom. Um, I've had the honor of serving our city for the past four years and I look forward to building on the progress that we've made together. As an educator, I bring a community empowerment approach to my work on council. From advocating for our residents across the city to supporting economic development and so much more. Dearborn is on the precipice of tremendous change and there are challenges that lie ahead. We must address the impacts of climate change and rebuild our infrastructure in a way that protects residents in every neighborhood across our city. Traffic safety in our neighborhoods and on our major roads is a critical issue and I will work with our police officers to provide the resources necessary to do that important work. Investments in our services, including our parks, our pools and our libraries will ensure a bright future for our city. Economic development from one neighborhood to the next with an investment in local small business owners will make Dearborn an even more vibrant place to live and help us attract residents. As we move forward, you can count on me to be an honest, responsive member of council who works hard every single day for you and your loved ones. Our campaign is all about people. Um, from everyone we talk to when we're knocking on doors, in every neighborhood, every corner of our city. My focus is on you. My focus is on our neighborhoods and our quality of life and you can count on me to continue to do that work. Again, my name is Erin Burns and I'm asking for your vote on November second. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, your closing statement, please?
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for taking time out of your night to listen to all of us speak about ourselves and goals for the city and most of all, educating our Dearborn voters. I want to thank all the participants on this forum for educating the residents on your specific views. With however the votes come in, we all will be working together one way or another to move Dearborn forward. You can see it in all of your eyes. The passion is there and won't go away. I want to thank all the listeners and viewers for taking the time to learn about each of us and making a choice based off the information provided by each candidate. I chose to do this because I know what an asset I will be for our community. I'm visible already in the community and have strong relationships with all Dearborn's wonderful corners. With at least three new council members and a new mayor, it was time for good-hearted people to step up and fill those shoes. My relationships built through my volunteer work brought me here. It has allowed me to keep Dearborn strong and working together as one. We need leadership to ensure all of Dearborn is represented as one. I can say with confidence with each of these candidates and mayor, whomever top seven and our new mayor may be, my relationship with them is already established in a positive way. Most of the candidates I already know prior to this election, uh, the ones I did not know, I reached out to them directly to introduce myself and say I have made new friends and acquaintances that I respect dearly. Both mayor candidates I've known for years and have great relationships with as well. Together as council, administration, and most of all, community, Dearborn has a bright future. I'm asking for your vote either now or on November second. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elzane?
Once again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us tonight. Dearborn is facing unprecedented challenges, whether it's crumbling infrastructure or the lack of vision, failing economic development, or the mere threat of shutting down our neighborhood pools. We can all agree that Dearborn has so much to offer, but we need to build on that. Dearborn needs bold leaders who will not back down from a fight. On November second, the top seven vote getters will be elected to represent our entire city and city council. We will be elected to represent the east end, south end, and west ends of our city. We will be elected to represent your best interests. We will be elected to fight for a better Dearborn. A Dearborn that continues to take pride in keeping our residents safe. A Dearborn that addresses its aging infrastructure by partnering with our county, state, and federal government. A Dearborn that's welcoming to all people and builds on our rich diversity. A Dearborn that attracts visitors and new patrons to our businesses, including new tenants at Village Plaza and the former Hyatt. A Dearborn that builds on our legacy and continues to offer our residents a reason to call Dearborn home. With reasons to celebrate like safely bringing back our Dearborn homecoming, cultural events in the south and east ends, and make Camp Dearborn a more attractive place for all of our residents to enjoy. A Dearborn that's safe for my children and for yours. I know we have our work cut out for us and I also know that I'm up for the challenge. I'm up for the challenge of working with our new administration. I'm up for the challenge of balancing a budget and holding people accountable to ensure that our city government is working for all residents. I'm running for council because for too long, our city has sat on the sidelines, not capturing the full opportunities available for our residents. I'm running for council because for too long, our city government has not embraced the talent and ingenuity of our young residents. I'm running for council because I can bring a fresh perspective and make decisions with all residents in mind. I'm running for city council because Dearborn is home. Dearborn is our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Enos?
Yes, I'd like to thank, uh, thank the League of Women Voters again for putting this on and it's been an honor to be on here. And I'd also like to wish all the candidates good luck and there's a lot of good candidates, right, that are, that I just listen to. A lot of smart people, a lot of good ideas. So as a business owner, twenty-six years, even if I don't get on the council, I feel the city's gonna be in pretty good hands right now. I think we are gonna see some unification going on with our city. Um, I just would like to say my, my commitment to you is to listen, respond, and address your concerns. I will work to preserve the city services that make Dearborn great and prioritize the safety of all our residents and communities and I'd be honored for your vote on November second. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farhat, your closing remarks?
I'd like to thank uh, the League of Women Voters uh, once again uh, for putting together such a great forum. And also I'd like to thank the viewers, the audience, the listeners, and all the candidates and wish them all the best. Once again, my name is Kador Farhat and I'm a public speaker, advocate, and public policymaker. I have a degree in political science from the University of Michigan, Dearborn. And I've been an active advocate, volunteer, and public servant in the past, for the past eight years throughout Dearborn and Southeast Michigan. As an advocate, as an educator, and as an individual, I'm always being committed and dedicated and my perseverance is not even, can be compared. Exactly how I never gave up because I am blind, exactly how I overcame every single obstacle that came my way, I pledge and I promise that I will never give up on Dearborn nor on every Dearborn resident. I'm running to fix our crumbling infrastructure, to lower our property taxes, to integrate technology, to make sure that our disabled residents have a voice at the table, to make sure that our public accommodations are actually accommodating everybody, to make sure that we are revitalizing our business community in the West. And also to make sure that the South and then the East and so forth, every part of our city has the same equitable resources and fair distribution of opportunities. I'm running because I call this home. I call Dearborn home. I would like to raise my family here and I would like to stay here. I work here. I spend my money here. I have fun here and then also certainly I make a difference in this city. I hope to earn one of your seven votes on, on or before November second. And I'm always accessible, always been accessible, always will remain accessible regardless of the results and the circumstances. My phone number is three one three, six eight six, six nine five three. Once again, that is three one three, six eight six, six nine five three. If any questions or concerns.
Ten seconds.
Uh, as I always said, it does not take sight to have a vision. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you. Mr. Hamud?
Uh, so I first want to thank the League for putting this together. I know it's a lot of work and it's really appreciated. Um, I also thank everyone watching this forum because uh, making an informed choice is critical at this juncture for our city and it's critical to our democracy. Uh, I want to stress that I'm running to serve our hometown and its residents. As a lifelong Dearborn resident, a Dearborn schools graduate, the values of service, community, and volunteer work have been instilled in me from a very young age. What I'm asking you is to consider me, to make me one of your choices for city council. While I'm sure many of you already have a few choices chosen for council, I'm asking me, you to add me to your list. You can vote for up to seven candidates and I promise to bring to the table my professional experience as a Ford engineer and my perspective as a lifelong member of this community to better serve you. I will make sure that none of our tax dollars are wasted and will make, I, and will work my hardest to find ways to save and cut our taxes without affecting our services. I will push for a real solution to our broken infrastructure to prevent future flooding and other issues such as electric power outages. I will work hard to make sure that our families and seniors feel safe in our city and that our streets are safer from speeding and reckless drivers. I will ensure that our residents breathe clean air, drink clean water, and have access to our beautiful parks. I will make sure our city welcomes both small and large businesses so they feel motivated to invest here, add to our retail options, and contribute to our tax base. It's time residents felt city hall worked for them and it's past time to treat people equally regardless of their political connections with city hall. With me, you get a common sense and a data-driven approach to solve our problems. You'll get a tireless advocate who listens to you and is not afraid of speaking up when needed. I am not looking for a career in politics and will make the tough decisions when needed. I want to work for you and to do that, I'm gonna need you to vote for me, Mustafa Hamud for city council from now until November second. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Herrick?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and to everyone who's watching this um, forum this evening. This is a really important uh, time in Dearborn's history where we have a great opportunity to make an impact on the, our future going forward. Um, this future is going to be determined by the people that you elect um, at, at all levels of city government and the partnerships that we form with residents and businesses and the nonprofit organizations that are the lifeblood of our city. My service in Dearborn is personal for me as someone who grew up here, attended school here, and raised my son here and it's, it's continued to make my home here as well as doing my, my business here. I've been um, privileged and honored to serve prior to being on city council, working for the city of Dearborn, the Dearborn Public Schools, the Dearborn Community Fund, and many um, volunteer roles where I have made an impact in keeping our city um, and working hard to make it a vibrant place that people want to live, work, and come to visit. I want to continue that work and that's why I'm asking for your vote um, now or on November second. Please find out more about me at my website at LeslieHerrickForDearborn.com or on social media or reach out to me anytime and I'd be happy to talk with you if you have any questions about my background or my plans for the future going forward. One of the other things that sets me apart from all the other candidates is that I'm the only candidate who's been certified by the Michigan um, Municipal League at, through the Elected Officials Academy where I continue to um, learn about ways that we can, can um, enhance uh, programs here in the city of Dearborn, more financial responsibility among the city um, and other things that we can do as elected officials. So I'm proud that I've been attending those, that program and I hold that certification at this point. Um, through my first term, I've been known
Ten seconds.
visible and working with residents, businesses, and community leaders across the city to, to keep Dearborn an inviting and safe place to live. I've hosted discussions and been honored to participate.
Thank you, Ms. Herrick. Thank you. Ms. Luckman, your closing statement, please?
Thank you to the League. Again, my name is Sam Luckman. I'm a mom with two kids and there's nothing more that I care about than my two kids. So public safety is my number one concern, not just because it's a political talking point, but because I do have something at stake. I do want to go back to talking about what green infrastructure changes I've brought to the city as a resident, as a mother, before the floods, before the campaigns. Green infrastructure that I brought as a resident. I've brought hundreds of trees to the city and rain gardens using corporate grants and nonprofits. I've fought and I continue to fight for the preservation of green space as the city is tearing down fields and green, decades-old trees and replacing them with parking lots with no mitigation measures as we speak. I continue to fight for better air quality and changes to the permitting processes at Eagle at the state level, holding big corporations accountable by working with them, with the steel mill on a supplemental environmental project to bring cleaner air to all of Dearborn. I'm someone who's been involved for decades in recreation from saving the pools, demanding more investment to our parks, and brought a splash pad at no cost to the city using county and state funds. As someone who's already been working for accountability and the betterment of the city, I'm asking you to vote for Sam Luckman to continue the work. You do get seven votes and no matter who you're v- voting for, I promise to continue working with whomever it is. Do vote for Sam Luckman for city council this November second. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Osman?
All right. Once again, thank you very much for the league. Uh, it's an honor and uh, I really appreciate all the work that you guys did behind the scene. My name is Khalil Osman and um, I'm running this grassroots campaign to serve you, the Dearborn residents, and not any uh, special interests or political or uh, establishment. Uh, I, as a candidate, as a resident, I know I'm a firm believer that the city has failed us time and time again. Whether it's a repeated flood that devastated our neighborhoods or crumbling infrastructure, high property taxes, high water bills, and wasteful spending. We deserve much better. We deserve, deserve more competent uh, uh, member in the council to get the job done. I'm committed uh, to you tonight that I will fight for all Dearborn residents and not just one side of Dearborn. I'm also, I have, I, as part of my plan, I am focusing on improving the city surfaces that will entail transparency, improved quality of surface, and digital transformation. These three things are major pillars to improve the city surfaces and ease the communication between the residents and build that trust between the residents and the city. As far as improving the quality of life, we are, we, we've been suffering from many issues for the last decade. My house got flooded like three times since two thousand fourteen. Flooding as, throughout my professional capacity, I worked as a disaster recovery manager for Stellantis formerly known as for Stellantis formerly known as uh Chrysler. And I am confident that I will be able to push for well-defined disaster recovery plan that will address every single point of failure.
Ten seconds.
If we had, if we get to hit with another disaster. Uh, I'm asking for your vote. I have the option to vote for seven. I'm asking for one of your votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Paris? Mr. Paris, you're muted. Want to start over?
Sorry about that. Uh, folks, I just want to uh tell all of you, thank you for running and having the courage to run. Good luck to everybody in November. Uh, I'm sure any of us getting on council uh would be more than willing to work with anybody else. I want to tell you though, something that's a little bit different about me than other candidates that may separate me a little bit. Uh, I haven't just showed up in the last few months or the last year. I've been around for five or six years at virtually all the council meetings, committee, the whole mayor's briefings, a lot of the boards and commissions to educate myself on some of the issues of the city and how myself and others can go ahead and resolve some issues. I think as a candidate, uh, being so educated and informed on a lot of the issues, knowing the process and the function of council, it's going to take me a little bit less of a learning curve than what it may be for other people to go ahead, step in to this role, which many of you have already stated is critically important this time in our history. I do want to say that there's a lot of things that need to be done, traffic safety problem and the escalation of crime. I'm not just one faceted person in law enforcement. There's a lot more issues that I've looked at. You know, that's number one, but then also our flood request for proposal for the cause and the future mitigation of the flooding is the second most important thing right now that we have to do. What about our ARPA funding and the projects that we're gonna spend the American Rescue Plan funding for? Where are the projects? I know uh council just got it this uh last week, some of the infrastructure that may be looked at, but we need to go. We can't just pass the buck to the next mayor and his administration, the department heads and any of the city council people that are running. I want you to know too that I have not sought any endorsements for anybody for this office. The only endorsement I want is you, the resident, to go ahead and take a look right now. Also, city charter commission, very important. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. Mr. Serini?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, I want to thank the League for sponsoring this and uh bringing it to our residents. It's extremely important. As many uh my uh colleagues have indicated, um, again, I've had the distinct honor of serving the last two terms and it's been um a, a pleasure to say the least. Uh, this is a unique time in Dearborn. There's no question. Uh, we're gonna have a new mayor and it comes with that an entire new administration. And with that being said, we need a very strong council and we need experienced leadership. I think that there is uh on the front of Dearborn right now uh, a change that's gonna happen and we are gonna have to be leading instead of sitting back. That means we're gonna have to have an administrator, uh, mayor as well as a council that's gonna be able to work together and make sure that we don't have situations like hotels and receiverships uh and um malls that are uh in uh receivership as well and foreclosures on commercial property. These are very big issues uh in the city of Dearborn and that requires leadership that's gonna be able to make tough decisions. Uh, I have been very proud of my record. I have stood by and made decisions that I believe were right and uh I was very pleased uh to see that the voters did agree uh with me and uh voted for me in the primary. I, I do think that at this stage of our city, we have to look at the long-term vision and where we want to be. And if we want to keep having the Michigan Develop Economic Development Corporation say that we deserve a yellow light because of the amount of ordinances and red tape we have and not allow businesses to open and bother our residents
Ten seconds.
and give them a hard time, it's not gonna be a welcoming place to live. We need to make sure that our residents are happy because they are paying one of the tac- highest tax rates in the city. I hope you consider me, Mike Serini, for this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham, your final statement?
Yes, thank you. I'm Councilman Robert Abraham and I'm asking for your vote for reelection in November. I'm very optimistic about our city's future. This is my hometown. I love it dearly and that's why I'm serving and that's why I'm running for reelection. I've been honored to serve five terms of office on the city council with twenty years' experience. Um, I do believe and agree that experienced leadership now more than ever is important to our city as we transition to a new administration and a new mayor. I've been endorsed by the Dearborn Police Officers, the Dearborn Fire Department, retired Councilman Mark Shushanian, Councilman Dave Bazey and Councilman Brian O'Donnell. They have endorsed me because they believe in my methodology, my process, my fairness and my transparency. I'm a graduate of Dearborn Public Schools, Sports and High School, Hillsdale College. I, as a professional, I was a CPA for more than fifteen years. I've also served professionally as a CEO and a CFO for large businesses in Michigan. I'm a third-generation Dearborn red resident and I pledge to represent all the residents of Dearborn from all facets of our community. One of my most uh valuable achievements is our population growth and our property value growth. I think those are key benchmarks to indicate some of the progress we've made as a council over the past several years. I'm here to protect our city services, senior housing, public safety, parks, recreation, pools, our library systems, our museum, our shelter and dog park. If safety and quality of life and neighborhoods are important to you, then please vote for me, Councilman Robert Abraham in November for reelection.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Mr. Alawafi will finish up with you. Your two-minute closing statement, please.
Sure. Uh, once again, I'd like to thank you and everyone else uh for putting this together and attending this event. Uh, my name is Said Alawadi. Uh, I'm a Dearborn resident for the last forty years. Uh, I also raised my family in the city of uh Dearborn. I have served this community for over twenty-five years. I've always been where I'm needed most. I've been a traffic commissioner for eight years. Prior to that, I was a precinct delegate. If I was needed on a board to help organize a political effort, I was there. When I, when my community needed an interfaith outreach organization, I was there. When my community was in need of individual who need uh, for those that were in need, I was there. I helped, I have always been where my community and my, my city needed me. With the struggle of this pandemic and this vital point in history that we find ourselves in, I put my own life and my family's life in the front line to help and coordinate and conduct COVID testings, uh, weekly food drives. Uh, certainly we have many concerns and issues in our city and I'm very committed to do everything in the best interest of the city of Dearborn and the, the uh city residents and nothing else. Uh, my community needs someone who cares, someone with a plan and someone who can get things done on city council. Those, once again, I will be here. I am here. I alwa- I will always be there for my community. Um, I hope that you would consider Said Alawadi for one of your seven votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, we thank you for your thoughtful responses to all of our questions and we appreciate the commitment it takes to run for office. We'd like to thank you all for your participation. And to the voters, remember that you can vote for up to seven candidates. The polls will be open on Tuesday, November second from seven AM to eight PM. Absentee ballots are also available from the city clerk's office for any reason. Please visit vote411.org for additional information about the candidates and your ballot. Please remember to vote. Have a nice evening. Thank you for your attention. Good night.